Trey, you ready to start? Good morning. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, May 2nd, 2022 to order. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid fashion as was affirmed reaffirmed legislative action last week. So we're allowed to continue. I think it's at least until next year. I didn't see the final print, but nonetheless. Our first order of business, pledge allegiance. Charles, will you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the states of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Note about the hybrid, yeah, be interesting to have any public input because I think it's been working great, especially with department heads. People being able to tune in whether or not they're available live or not. So I agree. I think continuing would be a good idea.
I agree. It would be my intention that these R meetings will be hybrid for as long.
There's a reason.
No reason to change it. And the capacity to do the same exists now right to the center. That room is outfitted, ready for all. There are a number of boards and commissions that meet in that big meeting room that I've referred to as the old board of finance meeting room. I can never remember the name of the room. So so that opportunity will continue to exist. Our town hall staff meetings have utilized this this room as opposed to their conference room because they can bring in developers and folks to their meetings without having to physically all be together. So I think it works well. And then lastly, Lou Federici, one of our members, is able to take part in this despite some work obligations that would have prevented him from being here this morning. So.
You know, I have to take this opportunity to compliment you on the technology side because I've used our operations here at Town Hall as an example and other boards that I am on. Because when the top technology works, it's great, you know, but it isn't always perfect. And I have to compliment how seamless it has been here at Town Hall. So.
Charles, thank you for that. I'm going to extend that to Tony Santar in Targorjolo. Easy for me to say, who's been, you know, steering us through this process. So it's not just me leaving here. It's the team.
But it doesn't just happen. I know that from experience.
Okay, item two, public forum, limited to three minutes on any agenda item. Is there anyone from the public who would wish to address us in public forum? Hearing none. Let's move on to item three, and that's the approval of minutes. Three dot one would be the April 18th regular board meeting. Is there a motion?
Oh.
And a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, changes, et cetera? I had none. Anyway, we're good. Lou, you're okay?
Solid.
Got it. All right. Let me try your minds. All in favor, I mean, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
In the room?
Aye.
Both abstentions, recusals, hearing none. Motion carries. Item four, Fire Chief Charlie Herschel, Charles Herschel. Four dot one. He's got his backup behind him over there. Four dot one, discuss to take possible action on the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus known as SCBA from the MES shipments fire equipment sole source vendor using a federal grant.
Right, right. As the board members on June 21st, 2021, this board approved the the first portion of this process with a PO of $75,000, which of $45,000 is the matching grant for the $494,000 grant that were approximately federal grant that were received. So here is the final request for the board to authorize a sole source vendor to finish the purchase of the air packs and get in going. We got a very short window for the grant, but these two individuals did quite a bit of legwork, chief showed and Captain Havikamp in getting this project done. And I'm satisfied, the board's satisfied, and we're going to move forward if this board approves it.
It's probably a good good opportunity for that to happen since we said for the first phase. Just before we vote on this, I want to take the opportunity yesterday afternoon as the chief's want, he was out on his bicycle. I happened to be mowing my lawn. We stopped and had a chat for a couple of minutes in particular about these two items. And hopefully I won't make your your team blush here, but in that conversation, the chief expressed to me what a terrific job both Mike and Clint have been doing over the years on securing grants for us. So just thank you to the work you're doing. All right, questions on this?
What is the actual out of pocket?
It's face. It's very forty five, $45,000 thereabouts. Okay, the rest of it's federal grant.
Wow.
Lou, was that a comment, Lou?
It's just a $400,000 grant. It's gigantic.
Yeah. Excellent. But there you go. The compliments the chief passed along.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything further? Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Both abstentions, recusals, hearing none. Motion carries. Four dot two, consider to take possible action on technician classes from the Commission on Fire Prevention and Control, sole source vendor. Charlie?
Right. Again, this is another grant that the
Team.
The team did. The total of that grant is how much?
Three hundred.
Three hundred and thirty.
Three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for rescue training. It pays the actual course, some materials and covers labor. And the Connecticut Fire School is the only one in the state of Connecticut that can issue certification. So it's kind of, we just figured we'd lump into one blanket purchase order, so we have to keep coming back.
Got it. Any questions?
I'm assuming this train is.
Well, it's mandatory, yeah, for us. Right.
Yeah.
Good.
It's interesting. So so all of this is something that we would be doing regardless. It's not like we secured a grant for something that's an extra that we wouldn't otherwise do. It's necessary.
That's correct.
So that's, that's.
Excellent work.
Yeah.
So the 80,000 is our part of the 300,000?
No.
No, our part would be 10% again.
Great. Anything further? Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Both abstentions, recusals, hearing none. Motion carries. Chief, thank you very much. See you later. Thank you very much.
Find that money, fellas.
Point I might make out is during budget season, I know we just went through it, so we're not necessarily thinking that way, but to point out some of these required, whether it be training or school equipment and that type of thing. I don't know if everybody recognizes just how expensive it is to to be ready for emergency, such as we had a few.
Great, great job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Okay. All right, item five, consider to take possible action on noise control ordinance variance application for family barbecue taking place on May 28, 2022. Location is going to be 26 Little Meadow. And this is a family event, amplified music, traditional family barbecue, gaming events. So blended family Olympics, which sounds more challenging than I'm ready to take on at this point. Anyway. We're working on pickleball, right, Lou?
It's enough at the moment.
Yeah, and I heard I heard you were cheating. You had an extra session yesterday.
Little little tune up. Getting ready for you.
Yeah, you got it. This is two to seven PM, which stays within the the traditional hours, but I think it's just the body.
They have numbers of people here.
Seventy. It says seventy somewhere.
Seventy.
But I wondered if it's two to seven on private property, you still have to get a noise permission to have amplified music. I thought it had to do with lateness of the evening.
Well, in a residential area, you would.
You would? Okay.
And the chief has signed off on this one as well.
Okay.
All right. Any comments or questions? All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
A second?
Second.
Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Both abstentions, hearing none. Motion carries. I probably didn't have to ask that question, right? Because she all voted in the affirmative. I'll give you a vote twice. All right. Item six, discuss to take possible action on noise control orders various application for an event taking place at Jacob's Beach on May 6, 2022. And this is an application from Guilford Day. And it is, as I mentioned, it's a campfire, Jacob's Beach Campfire. I'm assuming that Park and Rec has approved the campfire piece of this. The fire chief has signed off on it. So. And it is going to take place next, geez, this upcoming weekend. Right?
Friday.
Friday. Cool. And this is all part of the Guilford Day month of events and celebration. I was delighted to see upon my return home from vacation about two o'clock in the morning on Sunday, the flags adorning the greens. Anyway, any comments or questions or concerns on this? No. Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Some.
Second. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Both abstentions, recusals, hearing none. Motion carries. All right. Item seven, consider to take possible action on a proclamation for the Gilbert Keeping Society 75th anniversary. In a exchange of emails, Sue and I had talked briefly about this yesterday. Sue had raised some concerns. And this proclamation is for the Gilbert Keeping Society. And this is in celebration of their 75 year, 75th year anniversary. So and it is really to try to appreciation of early New England family values and raising awareness of the rich and varied legacy of early New England homes in our community. So Sue, you just want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, I'd be glad to. I'm all in favor of approving the proclamation and congratulating them on their success and naming June 11th Keeping Society Day. There was just a phrase that I didn't understand, and I felt that I wanted, I would need to understand it better to put my own name on this personally. And that phrase was early New England family values. I don't know what that is, and I'm feeling a little sensitive about that, and I would like to understand it better. I do see on the Guilford Keeping Society website that that phrase is used, and I would never be one to suggest, you know, for them to do anything differently. And I'm not in favor of changing history or anything of that nature. I just don't see why it's necessary for us to have it in our proclamation. So I thought we could just omit that phrase, and it's perfectly meaningful without it. Or if for some reason that would not be satisfactory for the Keeping Society, maybe we can understand that better or.
Typically, typically, we craft the proclamation and Karen is usually the the author of both of them. So I think we can title it, tell it as to anything that we would prefer. What do you think about substituting family values for early New England traditions?
I think that's great.
That's great.
Yeah, I mean, even the letter, I guess it's this Francis Wicky's letter, you know, it was more of architecture in the very beginning.
Yeah.
Yeah. It doesn't get into the other stuff at all. But your changes.
I mean, okay, you just took the phrase out.
That was my first thought, to just take it out.
I kind of agree with you.
Yeah, so it's a.
Because the it's still going to be very proclamation is still going to be meaningful and address the.
I kind of like tradition. Yes, it does speak to a little bit of the architecture, I think, right? But I, we could take, I don't want to overdo it.
When you say take the whole phrase, you took the whole paragraph out?
No, just by a group of Guilford residents, interest, interesting, interested in raising awareness of the rich and varied legacy of early New England homes in our community.
That's exactly.
That makes sense, too.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Thanks for picking that up because I.
Yeah.
If 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 just if you want to have a chuckle, if you if you Google early New England family values, we completely support your instinct on this. So it was a different place in the 17th century.
Exactly. Yeah, which we appreciate. Try to understand that. And so we can understand things today. But just for us, it's.
Good. All right. So want to put that in motion?
Would you like to? I mean, I'll make it. Oh, would you like to make it?
Sure. Well, I'll make a motion that we we adopt this proclamation as with one N.
Revised wording, as you said.
And I second it.
Any further discussion? Selectman Federici, let me try your minds.
In support of that motion as described.
And in the room?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Good. Sue, thank you very much for bringing this work. Okay. Make sure I'm not missing anything between my paper copy and the. All right. All right. Later, mate. Appointments and resignations. Eight dot one, act on the resignation of Bob Yarrow from the Safe Streets Mobility Task Force. I'll make that motion with appreciation and regret. One comment. Bob has been a very valuable member of the Safe Streets Task Force largely. This is longstanding activity and professional activity in urban planning and stuff. I first met Bob ironically on the campaign trail in 2017, when I met with a group of concerned residents of Route 146. And among some of the complaints were the speeding and traffic calming and accessibility and walkability. And I had an opportune moment to say, well, if I'm elected, I will put together a task force. And I, based on the conversations that were taking place in that room, I looked at Bob Yarrow and I said, and I think you're going to be one of the first members. And he said, I will do it. So appreciation to Bob. So so I make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye, with regret.
With. Those in the room? That motion carries. Item two, act on a recommendation to appoint Glenn Weston Murphy to the Pension Committee to fill the vacancy for a term to expire on November 30th, 2023. I'd like to make that recommendation as well.
I'd like to second.
And.
And I'd like the third.
Glenn is has reengaged. Glenn did a lot of work for us on energy stuff years ago.
Yeah.
He's recently retired from his teaching at Yale and at the university. And great, glad, glad to have him back in the mix on a volunteer basis. So let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Motion carries. Eight dot three, act on a recommendation to appoint Larry Rizzolo as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire February 28, 2023. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Eight dot four, act on a recommendation to move Wendy Furness from alternate to regular member on the Inland Weapons Commission to fill a vacancy to expire on February 28, 2023. Is there a motion?
Some.
Yeah, second.
Second.
And let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Both abstentions, recusals, hearing none. Motion carries. Okay. Item five, act on a recommendation to reappoint Ben Robinson to the Economic Development Commission for a term to expire on April 30th, 2026. Is there a motion?
Some.
Sandy?
Second. Sorry.
You got it. Let me try. I thought you'd make that motion.
I know. I retract my motion.
My mind already drifted already. So I'm sorry, but it's fine. Go ahead and make your motion.
No, it is fine. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Eight dot six, act on a recommendation to reappoint Barbara Heming to the Board of Ethics for a new term beginning August 1st, 2022 and expire July 31, 2026.
I'd like to make that motion.
I thought you might. I'd be happy to second.
About historical knowledge.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, let me let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Both abstentions, recusals, hearing none. Motion carries. Item seven, act on a recommendation to appoint Patricia Pierce to the Green Committee as the Historic District Commission Representative. Is there a motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Both abstentions, recusals, hearing none. Motion carries. Item eight, act on the appointment of Sarah Shrewsbury to the Inland Weapons Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on February 28, 2026. Is there a motion?
And I'll say.
We'll all say. Everybody's jumping on that. Exactly.
It sounds familiar from January.
It does. Yeah, we heard this before. Item, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. No surprise. Item nine, act on the appointment of Ted Sands to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire February 28, 2024. Charles? Second. Sue, I think we all second that as well. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. All right. Item nine, request for the use of town prop. Nine dot one, act on request of the police department to use the green and place a sign on the green advertising its national night out taking place on August 2nd, 2022 with the rain date of August 3rd. They are also seeking approval of noise control variance application for the event. And the chief probably gets to sign his own noise application variant. And I'm looking forward to that event. I really enjoy that event. It's been so well attended. Last year, it was, it was great to see as many people back out. And I know we weren't able to do that, but it's just as another great example of the community policing efforts that they're trying to gratiate themselves with the community. So is there a motion?
Some.
Second. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item two, act on a request from the Guilford Art League to use the green and to place a sign on the green advertising its exhibit and sale of fine art taking place July 15 through 17, 2022. Sign placement, this July 3rd through the 17th. Is there a motion?
Some.
A second. Good to see this back, back on on track. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Nine dot three, act on a request for the Gilbert Keeping Society to place a sign on the green advertising its 75th anniversary celebration taking place June 11, 2022. Is there a motion?
Some.
A second. Let me try, try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Both abstentions, recusals, hearing none. Motion carries. Nine dot four, act on a request of the Guilford Yacht Club to place a sign on the green advertising its junior sailing, summer camp registration taking place June 27th to August 19, 2022. Sign placement, May 5th, May 16th through the 30th. Is there a motion?
Some.
I'll second it. There's no discussion about whether competition with Park and Rec or any of that kind of.
Now, we, Park and Rec used to participate with the yacht club and that program. But they.
Believe it or so. I mean, we belong to other.
Exactly.
And, you know, obviously, a good number of the Guilford youth are participating in that. Do not necessarily have to be.
It's not just a member.
It's not. That's exactly. All right. Is there a motion?
I think.
We already did motion. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item 10, committee reports. No further update.
No, just, this isn't from the Housing Committee per se, but there, there will be that public hearing next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow regarding the town's durable housing plan.
Right. Have you guys received copies of that? That's what Charles asked me that earlier. Have you seen the?
I think I had one from Jamie.
All right, we have it. We'll make sure that it gets distributed to you today. This is the plan that was required by legislative action, actually, two years ago. And we participated with the Council of Governments as opposed to having all, you know, not all, all the members of Congress. There are some who opted out of a regional resource to help us develop the plan. So we've held, there's been a couple of public sessions for input on the plan. This is the 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 final draft at this point, which needs to go to 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 next week's meeting, after which we will need to formally adopt it for submission to the to the state prior to June 30th. It actually might be June 1st. So so I, you'll also get copies of it. The way that the thing is.
So it's a town presentation, right?
Yeah, Jamie Stein will be, we will have support from the consultant David Fink, who's well known throughout Connecticut, housing, affordable housing programs, who also, in many of the forums that I've seen, he uses us as a model for having done what we can with the limited resources and opportunities we have here. So anyway, that's, we'll give you guys copies of it. It will make for perhaps some tedious reading, but it's backed up by a bunch of data. And then the data define that defines the the areas that we need to try to improve, any opportunities that we need to improve. Then there's a set of strategies for us to to get through it. So.
So it's it's the Guilford Town Plan. It's not, it's our regulatory state or intergovernmental that kind of stuff. It's our.
It's our plan for.
Meeting the.
Right. For meeting the targets.
Target.
Targets. So back to my sales days, right? Those are targets, right? So that I'll get, we'll get copies of that out to you.
Sandy headed it.
Long Sandy.
No. Yes, but that'll be more efficient technologically getting it.
Okay. Anything else on the committee reports? I don't think so. Item 11, correspondence. So nothing to share? Old business? Anyone do anything under old business? I'll bring this up because Julie Cecil is actually online, one of our recent additions to participation in our meeting. This is related to the basketball courts. Progress is continues to be made in terms of working with the architects for rearrangement of the new storage facilities up there against balanced against the the full needs of both departments. I'm not going to let anything out beyond that at this point, but we're optimistic that there might be a solution. However, we're continuing to pursue putting a task force together. Carrie Federici has been nominated by the Police Commission as a representative to that task force. And this evening's Park and Rec Commission, I've asked that they appoint someone to participate in the task force, again, if if it's necessary. And tomorrow night, the Fire Commission meets and they've asked for a representative from the Fire Commission to serve with the three department heads and two members of the community. I have identified two folks that I'm going to ask who have volunteered. These are folks who have volunteered. So so quite honestly, my hope is we don't need to convene that task force, that there may be a solution in the office. That being said, I think we still will take a look at some of the opportunities that have been discussed as a result of this, which is enhancements to the facilities up at Bitner Park, regardless of the status, you know, even if the basketball court stays, the police department creating a better opportunity up there. We may not need to add another court up there, but I think adding lights is something we're probably going to talk about because that's going to benefit the the pickleball facility up there as well. Anybody else with anything on their old business? All right, new business. Public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum before we go into executive session? Is there? Julie, are you, Julie, you're muted. If you're.
My audio. Am I on now?
You're on now.
Okay. Thank you for speaking to the basketball court issue. I am planning to go to the Parks and Rec meeting tonight because I want to propose that if they do any work up there at Bitner, that they add more pickleball courts instead of refurbishing or whatever, doing something with the basketball courts. They're, especially if the ones at the police station remain, they're not used that much up at Bitner. And there is a demand for more pickleball courts. So that's where I'm at. And also talk to somebody about maybe paving that area in the back at Bitner at some point. But I'm mostly concerned about getting more pickleball courts.
Good.
So. That's about.
That's it. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Public forum? I'm sure there's anybody else from the public here. So item 15, discuss to take possible action on appeals from residents in accordance with section 247-31 rate of appeal. The Article 7 elderly tax relief program executive session may be required. In this case, it is going to be required. So is there a motion to go into executive session and we invited our assessor, Jen Bernato, in to discuss some of these appeals? So is there a motion to do so?
Some.
And a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
I got unmuted. Yeah, okay, I'm good.
Good. All right. Good, all right. Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Both abstentions, recusals, hearing none. Motion carries. All right, thank you. Go back into session. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Some, second.
Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. We concluded executive session. We were discussing tax appeals. There were no motions made and no action taken in executive session. However, coming out of that, I'd like to make the motion that the board approved the appeals that have been filed to us. And that as part of our deliberations, we will reconvene the task force that has staffed and managed the senior tax release program to look at it for the appropriate adjustments, given that this program hasn't been touched in a long time. So with that, I'll put that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Why, I was gonna have, well, this is discussion. Did, did we wanna say that a one-time, this is a one-time appeal?
Yes, it is our intention that this is a one-time appeal, subject to any modifications to the, to the plan and program as a result of reconvening something for all of the, for all the appeals.
Yeah, I would sort of add to some, maybe I'm wrong, but I would have a slight amendment to that to the effect of that the, the if, that these particular applications, the decision this year would be a factor in subsequent years in evaluating a similar request from the same people, or is that?
Beyond the one-year thing.
So that's the one year that's covered by the one year?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's the intent of the one year that I'm, that I'm on board.
Great, thank you. I would have taken a friendly amendment, but it's obviously not needed.
Okay.
So, any further discussion? Now, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wonderful.
Some, a second. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
And those in the room?
Aye.
Thanks all.
Thank you, Lou.
Bye.
See you later.